All right, so welcome to the September 12th Planning Commission. And again, I feel like I'm doing this each time, I apologize, we're a little late. We are having work sessions for the comp plan before each of these Planning Commission meetings, so we're always a little late, so apologies for that. With that, I'd like to have roll call.
Commissioner Miranda.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Strauss.
Here.
Commissioner Mangalik.
Here.
Commissioner Melton.
Here.
Commissioner Nemirov.
He's here, but he's on crutches, so.
My apologies. Commissioner Hamilton.
Here.
Chair Olson.
Here, thank you. Next is the approval of the meeting agenda, is there any changes to that, or are we, is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And then, the next one is the approval of the meeting minutes, which were sent to us today, and then we also have a copy in front of us, so. Did anyone have any edits to the meeting minutes, or? I didn't, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So we have one public hearing tonight, it's a variance request at 5119 Wooddale Glen.
All right, the subject property, 5119 Wooddale Glen, is approximately 27,000 square feet in area, and is located on the north side of Wooddale Glen, south of Minnehaha Creek. The existing home on the lot is a newly constructed two-story home. The initial survey that was submitted with the building permit for the new home did not include a patio or fireplace in the rear yard. It was found then with the submittal of an as-built survey that the patio and fireplace were added, do not meet the 50-foot setback requirement from the creek. The patio and the fireplace currently have a 36-foot setback from the creek. The environmental engineer has reviewed the application and has submitted comments that were included in your packet tonight. The drainage closely matches the approved stormwater plan, but the applicant will need to work with Minnehaha Creek Watershed District to obtain any required permits that they would require. Staff does not believe that there is a practical difficulty that prevents reasonable use on the lot. The fireplace and patio could have been constructed to meet the required setback. The applicant built the patio and the fireplace without city approval, and if the variance were denied, the reasonable use of the property would not be denied, as the patio and fireplace could be relocated on the site. The circumstances with this application were created by the applicant by locating the patio and the fireplace within the required setback. Tonight, the recommended action is to deny the 14-foot setback variance to the required 50-foot setback from Minnehaha Creek at 5119 Wooddale Glen, based on the findings that were outlined in the staff report. And I'll stand for any questions. Have some photos of it as well, around the presentation here.
Are there any questions for Emily?
I guess.
Commissioner Strauss.
Okay, the issue isn't just with the chimney, with the stack, it's the patio itself would also, just the floor, the stone floor.
Yes, the patio, as well as the fireplace, would need to meet the required 50-foot setback.
Okay, but it's not the height of that particular part, I mean, it's the stonework for the floor of the fire, of the whole patio, is in violation, so.
Yep, the fireplace itself, as well as the patio, would need to meet the 50-foot setback, whether it's the stonework on the patio, on the floor, or the fireplace.
Yeah, or the floor, yeah, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hamilton.
To guess, what percent of existing buildings, existing houses in Edina, that add decks and patios, sometimes many years after construction, apply for permits for those decks?
We do not require permits for all of those, but we expect that they would meet the zoning requirements. So I don't know, do you, Chris, do you have a, an estimate on percentage?
I don't, because we don't issue permits, so we don't know.
That was the answer I was looking for.
Okay.
Commissioner Lee.
All right, so normally, you said this was a new house, was it?
Yes, this is a newly constructed house.
Okay, so during the approval process, when they submit the building plans for the home, typically you would expect to see all patio and that type of stuff, landscaping, submitted at that time, is that correct?
Yep, this is the survey that was submitted with the building permit, on the right-hand side here.
Okay.
And it did not include a patio or a fireplace.
So after the fact, assuming the home was built, and then it was decided by the homeowner to do some additional landscaping work, what is required by the city at that point? Exterior to the house landscaping?
As far as permitting goes?
Yes.
There wouldn't be a permit required for the patio. There may be a permit that's required for the fireplace, if it's taller than seven feet, or if it's larger than 200 square feet. And then there's also considerations that the building official might want to look at with proximity to the home and the fireplace, the fireplace to the proximity of the home on the lot, as well as adjacent homes.
And so was this fireplace, did it exceed the height or the size requirements?
I do not have specifics on how tall the fireplace is.
Okay, so normally, you would expect that a homeowner would at least stop by the building department to discuss this, if they had any question about it. The ones who wouldn't stop by are the ones who think, I don't have any issues here, I've got the space, and there's no such thing as a patio fireplace permit on your website, so they make the assumption that they wouldn't need any special permission?
Yep, the expectation is that they meet zoning requirements, so setbacks in particular, and then lot coverage as well.
Okay, but zoning setbacks tend to fall more within the realm of the building, would you say? Because obviously, we don't enforce as a city, we don't make it very clear that by requiring a landscaping permit, or a, you know, exterior structure, whatever you call these things, patios, fireplace permits, that they would stumble on it more likely when they're talking about doing a construction or addition to the building, a building.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I guess just following up with the other questions that have already been asked, so, I mean, so the applicant stated that they were not aware of the 50-foot setback, how would they have known?
Well, the 50-foot setback was included on the initial survey that was submitted. It stated in the zoning ordinance that there is a setback required for, that includes patios from the existing high-water lines for existing waterways in town.
So they probably should have been aware of that, is that what you're saying?
Yep, or asked about it.
Okay. My last question is, if this gets denied, they have to remove it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Was it in your opinion that there is sufficient room to rebuild this, within, to meet the setback requirement?
Yes, or because this was a newly constructed house, the lot also could have been graded a particular way to include a patio, that would have met the setback requirement.
So if they are going to rebuild this now, it is going to involve regrading?
Possibly.
Okay, and then where would you, if you can just point out on there, where you approximately, in building department's opinion, or planning, where they feel that the fireplace could be relocated, would be the most appropriate place to relocate?
I would have to look at the house plans as well, but possibly to the rear of the home.
Okay, that's what I thought, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Great, thank you, Emily. So would the applicant like to speak? And just, you can go to either one of the podiums and just state your name and address, thanks.
Iron Harried Avenue South. Bloomington, Minnesota, thanks.
Did you want to add anything, or can you tell the story?
Yes, I would like to add a little something. So I was involved with this project, kind of on the very front end, when the homeowner started working with the architects to begin to build the house. Unfortunately, I was involved so early that it was before a survey indicating the specifics of a 50-foot setback was on a survey, that it was noted as a 50-foot setback. So up until the point of essentially getting the final as-built, was unaware that there was a full 50-foot setback from the creek. The previous home that was on there that was tore down actually had structure as part of the building itself that extended out into that same footprint of where the current patio piece is. And if you look at the design of the house, the lower-level walkout area, where the patio, fireplace, and doors and everything begin to go out, where the fireplace is positioned, really, it's at the lower-level walkout. So to change location of patio with that particular layout to meet the 50-foot setback would require significant regrading, significant retaining. From day one, we are extremely sensitive of the creek, and that's kind of the unfortunate thing about this whole situation currently. As we were sensitive to the creek, the existing grade and elevation that that patio is on is the existing grade and elevation of what was there prior. The, and in fact, so much so, that I think it's almost probably 30 feet from the creek, we literally did not even, the original existing turf is there. We didn't even end up taking out any of the existing turf, because again, myself, the builder, the homeowner, we're all sensitive to those issues. Now, as far as positioning, I mentioned, it makes sense in terms of location, in terms of the access in and out of the lower level of the house. But secondly, another cause for positioning, or feeling that positioning is really well-done, is it is out of the main line of sight of all the surrounding homes, to where if we were to position it to suggested space, a little further away, it does become more of an overall visual from neighbors across the creek into the side of the creek. In fact, the neighbor most greatly impacted by this particular patio and fireplace submitted a letter, have you guys read the letter? He submitted a letter, you know, in full support of keeping this in place, and even commented on how lovely it is, and how much of an improved appearance it is from the previous situation that was there.
Great, how tall is that?
I would have to double-check, but I think it's, I think it's eight feet.
Going, Emily, what did that, what was that, seven-foot limit?
They would need to work with the building department on getting a footing and foundation permit for the structure, if it's over seven feet tall.
Are there other questions for the applicant? Oh, go ahead, John.
Not a ton directly with Minnehaha Creek, I have done.
Water.
Yes, yes, yep.
One of the requirements for the water district, so came back and said, you know, you have a hard surface here, that's a difficulty, and it shouldn't be there. What, do you have some tools in your pocket that you would say, we can mitigate that hard surface runoff towards the creek by doing the following things, and incorporate it into the landscape design for this house?
Yes, we do, yeah, we have the full capabilities to, whether it's through use of, if they feel a rain garden is best, if they feel that the use of additional plantings near creek is the best in order to mitigate some of that, we have the full capability to do that.
You have the ability, not only to build it, but to design it?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Did you have a question? No, anyone? Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, so this is a public hearing, is anyone from the public who would like to speak?
Hi, thanks for the opportunity, I'm Shelley Carpenter, I live at 4421 West 52nd Street. Our backyard abuts the property in question. And my guess, my question is, I'm just wondering how this ever got to be to this point, where somebody can put something between yardscapes, the builder can take down a home and build a lovely big home on the creek, and not know what the setback rule is, I find that very unbelievable. And the owners themselves. This structure has been going on for quite a while, and I frankly, kind of wonder how the, why the city is even allowing a variance hearing on it, and making the neighbors be the ones to kind of say, what's going on here? I don't, I mean, our, value of our property is looking out at the backyard, out at the creek, there are rules for a reason on these watershed areas, and our beautiful lakes and rivers, and streams, and I don't understand why people can just go ahead and do something, and then after the fact say, oh yeah, we didn't know that we needed a variance. I find that very unbelievable, I really do, for the builder and for the yardscapes, and their, you know, their reputation is on the line, so, thank you very much. Any questions at all?
Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So bringing it back to the Planning Commission, are there comments? Additional?
In for a little, in for a lot. I think, I recognize Ms. Carpenter's response, and there's a large piece of my psyche that agrees with you absolutely, that the rules weren't written just for fun, and we're supposed to follow them, on one hand. On the other hand, in a sustainable universe, the last thing that we really need to do is tear it down and build it again. The last thing that the neighbors need is to have another front-end loader in the backyard that they get to watch move through the mud in the fall, so that as the winter freeze and the fall rains come, that we wash more mud towards the creek. And mobilize and do all that work all over again. I think that it's not fair to say to the world that we make these rules, but if we want to not apply them, we get to. But I think there must be, I would like to think there's a compromise here, and I'd like to suggest that perhaps that compromise might include some fairly serious rain garden work, to pick up not the 200 square feet that this patio offers, but a significant amount more than that, so that the folks downstream from this property are more protected from runoff than they would be. I think to take this out and put it back in again, really is not a wise use of resource. So I think that would be my proposal, is to work with Minnehaha Creek, to work with the city engineering, and to provide a requirement that significant runoff be protected on-site from this structure.
Any other comments? Okay, Commissioner Lee.
Well, I would say if resources, in terms of staff time, and I'm sure watershed district staff time were unlimited, I might actually agree with that. I do believe that we're putting time up here on the bench as well, reviewing these cases where it is unfortunate, it appears it might have been an error, but I think that we would be creating more problems for our city staff and ourselves, if we continue to review these things on a case-by-case basis after the fact. I do believe that a good designer, whether it be, it starts with the architect or the planner, and then of course, the landscape architect, is always, always responsible for checking the setbacks. I'm an architect myself, so, those things, I'm at a loss to understand how that could be missed. We're very clear about our, particularly on our water bodies, about the setbacks. So I think in this particular case, I would have a different opinion.
Right, and I think I just would like to add too, that even though, and Chris and Emily, correct me if I'm wrong, but even though there was already existing, the existing home had that patio there, when they came back, that would still be non-conforming, they would have had to receive a variance, right? That doesn't give them the green light to maintain that. And, you know, this is always really hard, because I agree, going in there and tearing it down and rebuilding, and what, you know, is that going to cause more damage? But it's really setting a precedence to just say, okay, let it be, because it's there, and I don't think I can approve it either. Is there a motion? Are more comments?
I would make a motion to approve it with the requirement that they provide in excess of 400 square feet of runoff in a rain garden, approved by the city engineer and approved by Menetanka Watershed. Menetanka, the creek may not accept it. Creek may not accept the, I believe that's true. Emily, could you help me out there? Do they have the right to turn it down?
They're their own permitting body, they would provide a permit, so yes, they would have the opportunity to turn it down, I believe.
No matter what we did?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Second, that motion? Hearing none, I think that motion fails. Is there a second, or another motion?
I move that we accept the findings from city staff in regards to this request, and move for denial.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Nay.
Nay, okay, great, thank you. So it was denied, so the variance was denied. So then, Emily and Chris, does this go further, does it stop here, they can take it to the council?
The applicant can appeal to city council within 10 calendar days, and that would be put on the next available council agenda.
Okay.
For an appeal.
Okay, all right, so just I guess keep an eye to see if it moves on to the council. So next on the agenda is community comment, and so this is an opportunity for anyone who is here who would like to speak on a subject that wasn't on the agenda tonight. Is there anyone here for that? See, none, is there a motion to close community comment?
Move to close. Move to close community comment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next on the agenda is the 2019 Planning Commission work plan. And Chris, are you going to walk us through that?
Yes, I will, thank you. So the first two initiatives are actually ongoing responsibility of the Planning Commission. The first one is the continued initiative of meeting twice per month, on the second and fourth Wednesday, to review all of the land use applications submitted to the city, what is really our typical business of the Planning Commission. So that would always be on our work plan. The second initiative, which is ongoing, which is temporary, but still very much ongoing, is our comprehensive plan update, so we're still in the process of that 10-year update to the Metropolitan Council, which would continue on into 2019. So then, if you look on the second page, on the third initiative, which is a new initiative and an ongoing responsibility of the Planning Commission, this is sort of a bucket list or laundry list of some of the ordinance amendments that the Planning Commission has periodically mentioned to continue on into our 2019 work plan. Those are listed to be recommendations that come out of the comp plan update, as well as just general ones that have come up or bubbled to the surface, including looking at establishing impervious surface regulation to include grading and drainage pieces, whether we should continue to require basements for single-dwelling units. Currently, the code does require basements. There is the one-foot rule for the first-floor elevation, we do have exception for lots that are required to raise their first-floor elevation due to water table issues, and we've had a number of requests, and is there a better way to handle those situations? There's also a two-car garage requirement. Given some of the discussions over the past year, whether we should continue to require a two-car garage for every single dwelling unit that's either substantially remodeled, or if it's a teardown rebuild, if a property owner chooses just to have a single-stall garage, or for that matter, no garage at all. Then we also have the consideration to allow single-dwelling unit homes in the R2 district. We've had to rezone properties in the R2 district to actually construct a single-dwelling unit, and the language on that in some people's minds was a little bit unclear, so we were hoping to take a look at that. Those are just the bucket list items for the zoning ordinance amendments that we had on our list, there may be more, and I guess that's what we're here to find out, is if there's any other ideas, or if you recollect any other discussion where we had thought about other ordinance amendments. And then, the final initiative, which is new, is the area study for the Cahill Industrial Park, that had been a mention as a, sort of a small-area plan or district ride plan, after the comprehensive plan is complete, as sort of an extension of the 70th and Cahill Small Area Plan. That might be, I guess there's some discussion that might be needed on that, because we're not going to be done with the comprehensive plan until 2019, so to have that put on our current work plan might be a little ambitious. And so Carrie wanted everybody to take a look at this, and then this would be then put on, I believe, the next Planning Commission agenda.
Chris, are there any comments? I know that Carrie and I were kind of racking our brains, trying to remember the lists that we've been, you know, jotting down as we go through, so did we miss any, John?
There's been some discussion on affordable housing in Edina, and what zoning might do to mitigate some of those problems, and some discussion about mother-in-law apartments or other pre-standing secondary buildings in single-family zoning, that I'm not going to suggest that we're ready to write that zoning ordinance, but we might be certainly ready to explore it.
Okay. Got it, thank you. Anyone else? Sue?
In the past, we have brought this up a couple times, that I think it's particularly in terms of new development, when we get a traffic study, it would be helpful to have the traffic study reviewed by the Transportation Commission. I know that they are involved in a lot of things right now, bikes, traffic, as well as just a complete look at. as just a complete look at sort of the bottlenecks in the future for Edina. That it would be helpful to have the input of the Transportation Commission somewhat in the form of a memo, the way we do with our engineering. So I guess I would like to propose that we have our traffic studies reviewed by the Transportation Commission, that was one. The other thing I was going to say is the R1, allowing single-family homes in an R2 district, I might actually flip that, I mean, based on sort of what we're talking about now, needing to consider higher density in some of our neighborhoods, that we might look at allowing R2 in R1 districts. And again, I'm not so sure that I'm even thinking, and again, maybe other commissioners may feel differently, but that to consider to allow single-family homes in an R2 district, to me is almost kind of a moot point, I mean, obviously you could still consider it, but that it doesn't necessarily merit, given the fact, the direction that we're headed with this comprehensive plan, to that in some ways lessens density, so it encourages larger homes on large lots.
Anything else? So we still have the opportunity to review this and get back to you, is that right? And do you just want us to email you anything that we... Carrie? Okay. Prior to our next planning commission, is that what you're, okay? Okay.
Yeah, overall, I want to say that you did a great job, you know, because I mean, if you were picking your brain, it's like, yeah, that's right, all those things did come up. Yeah, so I'm glad to see pretty much everything's on there. Nice job.
Great. So the next we have correspondence and petitions. Anything? Nope. Chair and member comments. Do we have any updates from any of the planning commission members, or anything anyone wants to report? Go ahead.
Excuse me, so I was asked to bring this up by someone, a Twitter user, who actually turns out to be a former student member of the planning commission, Peter Kivamaki. We probably all have heard about the car that crashed into the gas station at 50th and Vernon. It's been a big thing on the news. So, you know, his comment was basically, this is what happens when you design for cars, right? And so we actually, as a commission, recommended against, there's a development across the street, of course, that's a two-car or two-lane drive-through coffee shop and whatnot. And so when you design cities to allow maximum use of cars, then, you know, this is kind of what happens, and so that was his point. He's actually studying to do a planning degree, but, and I kind of agree with him, that, you know, the city council didn't agree with us, but that was a poor use, I think, for that piece of property. But I've heard that people were in the hospital for that, I don't think anybody died from that or anything. Did anyone know what's happened with that? No. So anyway, we just need to, you know, I think, be stronger in our planning for making sure that cars don't have such priority in our city.
Just, I was just going to ask, Chris, so we just, earlier this evening, we were reviewing the comprehensive plan update schedule, is that going to be on the website then, so everyone can kind of follow that?
As long as you are giving it the blessing, then...
I don't know, I mean, as long as everyone, you do a little note, can be revised.
Well, yeah. I mean, this is very ambitious, and it's about, it has everything that we think we need to do on there, and the dates that we believe that they can occur.
Right, right. I mean, at the very least, it just shows all the pieces, and it's kind of, I think it might be good to get out there, I don't know, unless other people think differently.
Yes, the 50th and, yes, the 50th and France group and the Southdale group got in a post of hot water because we had to change some meeting dates at the last minute, and it just happens, you just have to do it, because consultant team's not ready to present because of a lot of things. So I don't know how we... You know, we draw that fine line and say, if it changes, we're sorry, but...
Go for it, but do try to add a little disclaimer, because, yeah, it's just, it's multiple pages and there's a lot going on, and I think it's good for everyone to see that.
People are waiting to see it.
Yeah. Great. Well, before we leave, you guys aren't going to get off that easy. So we have, did you want to say something before I jump into that? Yeah, are there any staff comments? They were already shaking their head. Okay, so we always have two student members on the planning commission, which is incredible, and you guys are going to, you know, fill the seats well, I can tell already, but it's been, it's been an incredible, we have a great track record, it's just, it amazes me every time. So we're so excited to see you, but maybe you could each give just a quick, you know, introduce yourself and say maybe why you chose to do this, and whatever you're comfortable with talking about.
My name's Yash Monglik, I'm a sophomore at Edina High School, and I really wanted to be part of the planning commission, because I think it's probably a very important part of how the city runs, and maybe not given as much attention or like glory as some of the other topics, but probably one of the most utilitarian.
Thank you. Great.
My name is Isabel Melton, I'm a junior at Edina High School, and I decided to get involved with the Edina Commission, Eduna Planning Commission, because I also think it's a really important part of how the city runs, and I was very interested in that. And I also think it's really important for the youth of our community to be involved in the community and see how it functions, so we can improve it in the future and keep it going as great as it is.
Yeah, and no pressure, but the last two just went to what Dartmouth? So it looks good on the resume. So, great, well, we can't wait. This is very exciting, we're happy to have you join us. Okay, anything else?
Move to adjourn?
Yes. Second?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Thanks.